Erased the lemon str. When she had gone into hospice.
But I know that I was. Last Sunday.
We got audio.
Are you gonna start video? Oh, no. I think it's a combination, maybe.
I think it's you. It's all right.
Well, I guess, sir.
Oh, I mean, call Steve Arndt.
Right here.
What?
We're here.
Would everyone please mute yourself? It's seven oh two P M on Wednesday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. I will call the Manchester Board of Appeals meeting to order. I am Sarah Knowledge, the Chair. I have with me John Benares to my left, Brian Solissey to his last left, James Mitchell to my right, and Catherine Hough to his left. Thank you. We will be beginning this meeting with a new application for nine Washington Street. I will open the public hearing for the application of Adelaide Julia Bond for a special permit under section six point one point two and seven point five point two of the zoning bylaw and/or other relief as may be necessary to construct in addition to a nonconforming structure with respect to setbacks on a nonconforming lot at nine Washington Street, assessors map number forty-six, lot number ten in the general district filed with the town clerk on September twelfth, twenty twenty-two. This is a scaled-down version of a special permit we granted for this property on July seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. Do we have somebody? Remco, are you going to speak on this application? He can't hear you. Can people hear me?
Remco, can you hear us?
Hi, now I can. I'm sorry about the delay with that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my apologies.
Do you like to present the application for nine Washington Street to us?
Yes, I would, please. Thank you. I I know that a few of you made it to the site visit on on Saturday and also a few of you have seen this project before, or at least the same address. This is a reduced-sized project from what the board had approved about three years ago. Prior to that, we also had a second floor on top of the main floor there, and it was a fairly large expansion. This new proposal is a reduced size. It maintains the same footprint, but it does not go above the first floor. If if you look at the, there's a survey attached, and also if you could switch to page T one point zero. The current lot is nonconforming in terms of size, and the building itself is nonconforming in terms of its side yard setback on the left. And the front, the rear, and the other side are all conforming. And our proposed addition falls within the building envelope, so that is also conforming. You'll see on that on that plan, T one point O, in the far right corner of the building itself, we labeled proposed new footprint and addition. If you're at the sidewalk, you notice that that part of the building essentially is left open at the moment, and we're essentially squaring that off. That will be a two-story addition, so a basement level and then a main level. And to the left of that, there is currently open space that you noticed was on on pillars. So there's the existing main floor covers a portion next to it, and we're essentially filling the the big level portion up. Are you are you able to follow that?
Yes.
Okay. If we now can turn to page Are you? Are you there, two point zero?
Sorry, we were having some interference. We will be there.
Okay, no problem.
Two point zero, yes.
Yes, sorry, we're there now.
Great, great. The first first thing I want to note is that if you go to elevation number one, which is on the top right, you'll see that from the front of the building, there will be essentially no changes. You won't see any difference on that elevation from the street. Then if you look to the left at number four, that is actually the the long side elevation, and you'll notice that we've labeled where the existing building is and where the proposed addition is. So we're essentially filling that up to that, again, the the roof of the first floor. Below that, the other longer elevation, you'll see that we're filling in the area again, like proposed addition, a small area down on the left. And at the rear, that you'll see that that whole facade is now being designed as one one on the basement level and on the first floor level. I was there at the
Looks like the slope of the roof is is the same as what's already there across the addition.
Yeah, that's correct. The the current slope of the roof is. So again, if you were to look at at elevation one, you'll notice that there's a a small, slightly sloped roof above the entry. That is really the highest point that 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 the roof is, and all the other roof will actually fall behind it. So it will not come any higher than the current roof at all. And that's really the gist of the project.
Any members of the board have questions? I mean, what we looked at in two thousand and nineteen, there was a huge glass extends way high up, and this is keeping it at the main floor.
I have one question. Does the balcony interfere with any of these setbacks? Is the balcony extends beyond the footprint of the house?
Yeah, no, there still is quite a bit of room on the rear, the the rear yard there. It does not infringe on that. I think it's a five-foot setback, in fact, on the rear, so there's ample room behind there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions, Kevin? I don't think we do. You're good, John. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak with respect to this application? If so, raise your hand in Zoom. I'm seeing none. You ready? Let me make a motion.
Yes.
While I'm sitting on the floor. I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of Adelaide E bonds for a special permit under section six point one point two and seven point five point two of the zoning bylaw and/or other relief as may be necessary to construct a twenty-five-foot, two-inch by fourteen-foot, two-inch lower-level addition and a twelve-foot, three-inch by fourteen-foot, two-inch addition above it and a balcony on the main level at the rear of the nonconforming structure with a low-profile, sloopy roof consistent with the existing roofline at nine Washington Street, assessors map number forty-six, lot number ten in the general district, filed with the town clerk on September twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Based on the finding that the proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, the proposed addition will not be more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it is located, and the requirements and conditions under seven point five point two of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met. Based on the condition that the addition is constructed in accordance with the following documents, slot slash plans created by Booker Design LLC. E two dot zero, existing elevations dated May tenth, two thousand and eighteen. T one dash zero, proposed site plan dated September ninth, twenty twenty-two. A one dash zero, proposed plans dated September ninth, twenty twenty-two. And A two dot zero, proposed elevations dated September ninth, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a second?
Second.
James seconded. Any discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Five zero. Who would like to write it?
I'll write it.
James.
All right.
Brian. Okay, you're all set, Remco.
Thanks very much. Thanks for your time. Have a good night.
The next item on the agenda is an appeal of administrative decision that was continued. I will open the continued public hearing for the application of Benjamin B. Hyman, attorney, on behalf of Samuel and Tracy Byrne of one dash three Blossom Lane for the appeal of an administrative decision under section seven point four point five of the zoning bylaw regarding a request for zoning enforcement filed with the building inspector on June twenty-one, twenty twenty-two for construction in progress which appears to exceed the scope of the special permit granted and building permit issued at two Blossom Lane, assessors map number seventeen, lot number twelve in District E, filed with the town clerk on August eighth, twenty twenty-two. This is a complex case. I will have the applicant present their case, allow the property owner to respond, and ask Paul Orlando, the enforcement officer, to describe the response received from the property owners with respect to the enforcement order. I will then make a brief statement regarding the various components of the project. Then the board will discuss one item at a time and take public comment with respect to each item. Since the special permit was not appealed, the basis upon which the relief was granted will not be discussed tonight. And we do have oh, boy. Well, I'll find them later. We have the letters from the Okay. We've received letters from a butters or interested property owners. One from October seventh, twenty twenty-two, from John Quill First. My name is John Quill First, and I live at six Blossom Lane. I moved into six Blossom Lane in twenty twenty-one. I write to you today to express my full support for the appeal filed with the board by Sam and Tracy Byrne regarding the large construction project occurring at two Blossom and to inform you of my immediate concerns regarding the construction at two Blossom, which is separated from my home by just one parcel. My first main concern regarding the two Blossom project has to do with the property's lack of any drainage plan. I am greatly concerned about the increased risk of water from the two Blossom running off down the street or across four Blossom and onto my property. Undoubtedly, the expanded impervious surfaces on the two Blossom property will increase the amount of runoff that will come down Blossom Lane. My property is next in line for the runoff water to go. I respectfully request that the board require two Blossom owners to provide a professional drainage plan so that these risks can be better understood and then mitigated by the Smiths to protect neighboring properties like mine. My second main concern has to do with the overflow of parked vehicles on Blossom Lane due to the construction at two Blossom. I am a senior citizen, and though I hope such services will not be required at any time soon, I am concerned about my potential need of emergency services at my home and the increased difficulty for EMS to come to my property. The construction of the two Blossom project has exponentially increased the traffic volume on Blossom Lane. Sometimes we are unable to even drive to and from our homes to the amount of vehicles parked on Blossom Lane, a very narrow public way. I further request that the board address these concerns by disallowing any construction vehicles to be parked on Blossom Lane. Surely, the construction vehicles can be parked on the two Blossom property or somewhere else so as not to impede our ability to get to and from our homes. And I'll just state that the matter of construction vehicles would be an enforcement issue, not something before this board. Thank you for your attention to my letter, and I look forward to providing comments about my concerns in person. The next letter is from four different residences. Robin Swayze, sixteen Mascanoma Street. I left the Board of Appeals meeting in two thousand and nineteen, surprised and disappointed that the Smiths were planning on expanding the pre-existing garage footprint by moving the garage closer to the lot line and expanding it considerably. This puts their garage twenty-six inches from the property line. I wrote an email to Rodney Smith, asking him to consider reducing the size of the garage. While he was considering how to comply with the impervious requirements set forth by the board, the Smiths responded that they needed the garage to remain as drawn. Again, we will be looking at what was approved in the special permit versus as-built condition. That's the basis of this meeting. When construction of two Blossom began, I was very surprised to have Carpenter McNeil's project manager Brett Crimmon insist that I let them put up a construction fence five feet on my side of the property line so they could take the foundation that such a large garage would need. I had no idea that this fence would be on my property for three-plus years. Over the next three years, I asked to have the fence moved back at least half a dozen times and was always given a reason that it could not be. The garage was so close to the lot line that it couldn't be constructed, roof painted, stuccoed, or grated around the fence in its rightful position. In order for them to excavate, they also had to remove one of my gardens that took three-plus years to restore. At the end of the ordeal, the fence was left down for a couple of weeks while their dumpster was piled high with trash. There were seagulls and crows circling the dumpster. One night, my family and I went out to grill and found our pool cover and many, many piles of raccoon feces on it due to the Smiths' dumpster. In order to remediate the damage, our pool had to be drained, cleaned, and refilled, and the pool cover replaced. This project cost around thirty-five hundred dollars. I sent photos and explained what happened to the Smiths, but was not reimbursed. Again, that is not a matter that was before us with a special permit, so that will not be discussed tonight. As I look over the Smiths' original proposal and drawings, it is easy to see that what has been built on a half-acre lot is far from what was originally approved. For example, the front elevation doesn't show the wall that they are building around three-quarters of the property. The garage particularly affects me because the back side of the garage, including roof and imposing hoopla, which I fear may have lighting and a large weather vane, is approximately twenty-six inches from the fence that finally went down. I am also concerned about the large amount of lighting that looks like it will be installed. In the drawing, it looks like the spa should be set back fifteen-plus feet, but in reality, it has been built approximately six feet from the property line. It looks larger than drawn. The poolhouse is clearly larger than drawn. Further, given the large amount of fill that has been brought in, drainage has got to be a problem. Next is Martha Brown, eighteen Mascanoma Street. My main concern regards the Smiths driveway and garage. Carpenter McNeil's project manager Brett Crimmon asked me at the beginning of the construction project if I would give the Smiths six inches of my land for them to build their garage. I subsequently wrote a letter to the Smiths stating that I would not agree to give them six inches of my land. Additionally, the balcony that wraps around the west side of the Smiths' house looks over my property. I am concerned with the lighting that the Smiths intend to install on this balcony if the lighting on this side of the house is large. It will certainly be intrusive. I do not believe that any of these features were shown on the special permit plans approved by the ZVA. Finally, a picket fence divides my property from the Smiths. On my side of the picket fence are some very special conifers. I do not want the roots of the trees disturbed in any way. Next is Annie and John Hall, twelve and fourteen Mascanoma Street. It is clear that the construction on the two Blossom property is a massive building project, obviously not in conformity with a reasonable renovation Smiths originally proposed. At the beginning of the construction, the Smiths and Brett Crimmon, the contractor for Carpenter McNeil, requested to take down our fence separating our property from the Smiths and borrow five feet by a hundred feet of our land so they could lay a foundation and construct their ten-foot-high wall and fence. We highly objected to the wall height until they stood on their side of the fence, and our six-foot fence only came up to their waist, since they had added several feet of fill on their side. This plan was to leave us with a construction fence while the great wall was being built. Instead, they agreed to my obvious suggestion that they move our fence forward during construction. Brett told me there would be a gate in the wooden part of their fence for the Smiths to have access to our property and vice versa. This is not something we want. Brett also promised us they would replace a tilting utility bowl and bury some overhead wires, although the tasks have not occurred. The Smiths have chosen to include in their renovations a massive spa, not on approved ZVA plans, along with a large pool, also not in the approved ZVA plans at that size. The spa and pool are very large for the half-acre lot space and are very close to our property line, which will inevitably have an impact on us. Additionally, the two Blossom plans do not show lanterns on the wall pillars, yet we have heard that lanterns will be built. This wall is with inches of our bedroom counter. The deck off the Smiths' second floor feels intrusive to our property as well as to the Byrnes. The lighting from the deck is directly aimed in two directions, one at the Byrnes' house and the other into the bedroom of our house at twelve Mascanoma. Our houses at twelve and fourteen Mascanoma have been in our family for decades, and we never were conscious of two Blossom Lane. Yet now, the garage, the house, and the poolhouse are large over the wall, which has been under construction for over a year. We understand that it is typical for neighbors to be inconvenienced when other neighbors are renovating their property. However, the three-year-in-running two Blossom renovation project has proven to be a far cry from your average renovation. This fact has been made especially stark within the last several months, as it became clear the Smiths are building a project substantially larger and more intense than that than what the ZVA approved under the two thousand and nineteen special permit and special permit plans. And further, since the time of the Byrnes' appeal, the Smiths appear to have doubled down and accelerated noncompliant projects. We hope the board will put a stop to this construction and force the Smiths to abide by all zoning laws and special permit. Thank you for your attention, more letter. We look forward to further amplifying our concerns in person. Well, I guess I do.
You're doing such a good job.
This is a letter to Paul Orlando. We write to you concerning the development project occurring at two Blossom Lane. As you know, two Blossom, owned by Rodney and Carlos Smith, is presently undergoing a major construction project that has well exceeded the scope of both the special permit and building permit authorizations. As further detail below, the project's clear permit violations and its noncompliance with Manchester zoning bylaws and the State Building Code directly and negatively impact each of our neighboring properties and the neighborhood as a whole. Accordingly, we respectfully request to intervene as a town zoning enforcement officer to decline issuance of any certificate of occupancy until those matters were resolved by the ZVA. It is evident the Smiths began accelerating all construction at two Blossom since they were made aware this past June that their project was under legal challenge by neighbors for violating permits. Our fears that the Smiths or their contractors are trying to create a situation where they can assert to the zoning board that the project is done, and they should be excused from remedying any of their noncompliances. In other words, they will resort to begging forgiveness rather than ask permission type of approach with the zoning board. We also are concerned that if the town issues a CNO for two Blossom, the Smiths will also try to use that fact unfairly as rationale for why the zoning board should give them a pass on their significant violations of the special permit. Additionally, it's obvious that the Smiths chose to ignore the cease and desist or order concerning construction of the poolhouse when they continued with that minimum utility work to service the poolhouse. In light of the fact that the Smiths are moving full speed ahead with their project while seeming to plow work stoppage orders, we respectfully request the order of the Smiths to cease and desist all construction work at two Blossom property at this time, at least until the zoning board has its say. We respectfully request a response to this letter within the fourteen-day period. Signed by Donna First, Don August, Nancy August, Anne Hall, and John Hall. Next letter is from Donald and Nancy August. We have been long-term residents of Manchester and have been very fortunate to live in a wonderful neighborhood. Our neighborhood is now very concerned by construction which has occurred at two Blossom Lane. There have been many instances of lack of adherence to the permit, which is a worrisome precedent. We will leave permit issues to the lawyers. We are most concerned with two issues. First, the pool area in the original ZVA hearing in October two thousand and nineteen was according to architect Grant, have low light, no spotlights. There are now many tall stone poles with what seem to be fittings for lights, which do not appear to have been on the original plan. Our master bedroom, the guest room, overlook the pool, and we believe the lighting could be intrusive. Furthermore, there are many spotlights around the house as well. We do not believe these were on the original plan. Our second concern is that a precedent is being set, namely, the overbuilding of nonconforming lots, which would be, could be detrimental to neighborhoods and perhaps the town over the long term. We hope the ZVA will carefully consider granting future special permits. And finally, from Donna First, dated September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. My name is Donna First, and together with my husband Philip and our children, we live at eight Blossom Lane. Philip and I have owned and lived on the property since two thousand and eleven. Since two thousand and twelve, we have also owned six Blossom Lane where my mother-in-law presently resides. I write to you today to register my full support for the appeal filed with the board by Sam and Tracy Byrne, our longtime neighbors at one through one through three Blossom, regarding the massive construction project occurring at Two Blossom. I also write to expect, express my alarm to the board about the disruptive frantic, frantic pace of construction that has been occurring at Two Blossom since the Burns first filed their petition with the building inspector in late June. This sense of urgency and alarm is something which I have already and repeatedly expressed to the building inspector over the past three months. Six and Eight Blossom are separated from Two Blossom only by the Mason's House at Four Blossom. Because of the impacts a large unregulated project would have on our properties, I was an active participant in the August two thousand nineteen special permit hearing in front of this board. At that time, I raised a series of concerns about the negative impact that would befall neighboring properties on Blossom Lane and Mascanoma Street, including Six and Eight Blossom. If the board did not put careful and strict limits on the scope and scale of proposed Two Blossom project. Because Two Blossom's owners have now violated those limits in numerous flagrant ways, the concerns I expressed at the hearing three years ago have resurfaced as actual adverse impacts on my properties and others in the neighborhood. And these current and potential future impacts are much worse than even what I'd have contemplated in two thousand nineteen. But the board can put a stop to this and I urge you to do so. The following are my core concerns about Two Blossom. Accelerated pace. The Burns filed their petition with the town called a request for zoning enforcement in late June. In mid-June, I contacted Inspector Orlando for the first time with my concerns about construction activities at Two Blossom that appeared to the naked eye to be more extensive and larger and more intense than what any of us had been led to believe in two thousand nineteen, or what, as I understand it, this board's special permit has allowed. In short, the Smiths and their contractors have known for more than three months that this project was under legal challenge by neighbors for violating permits. Yet the pace of construction is getting more rapid and intense by the day, and despite the Burns' formal request, Inspector Orlando has declined to issue a cease and desist at Two Blossom beyond a narrow one for the pool house. My fear, which I know others in the neighborhood share, is that the Smiths or their contractors may be trying to create a situation where they can assert to this board in the fall, once the hearing on the Burns' appeal gets underway, that our project is almost done and too far along to change. Please don't make us comply with our permits or get variances for oversized structures or sentiments to that effect. If that emotional appeal is made to the board at that time, please do not give credence. Two Blossom's owner and contractors have been proceeding at their risk and their eyes wide open to the fact that legal challenges to their project are pending. Impervious surfaces. One of the issues I believe you will be assessing is whether the Two Blossom project, which now features and has built pool house more than twice the size of the equipment shed this board approved in two thousand nineteen under the special permit, in addition to a host of other unauthorized construction elements, as detailed in the Burns' appeal, has exceeded the thirty-five percent impervious surface limit the special permit imposed. I find it very hard to believe that that limit has not been exceeded, given the mass, massive size and scale of what has been built and installed already at Two Blossom. Drainage plan. Due to the unauthorized construction of project components that have surely increased the amount of impervious surfaces beyond what the special permit allowed, I am very concerned about the increase to runoff coming down Blossom Lane and onto our property at Six Blossom in particular. I respectfully ask that the board require Two Blossom's owners to provide a professional drainage plan so that these risks can be better understood and then mitigated by the Smiths to protect neighboring properties like mine. On-street parking. The unauthorized expanded project has taken up so much additional lot coverage on Two Blossom that it leaves little room for onsite parking. This has certainly been in vivid display for months and months while construction vehicles and equipment have dominated our street and adjoining streets. But this lack of onsite parking will persist once the project is done. This was among the concerns I and others raised at your hearing on August two thousand nineteen is now starting to fruition to dismiss apparent bouting of the limits on your special permit. Emergency access. My mother-in-law, John Paul First, is submitting her own separate letter to you, but I am greatly concerned about the difficulty an emergency vehicle navigating around Two Blossom's overflow parking on the street in order to reach a residence at Six Blossom in the event she needed emergency services. John Paul is a senior citizen who recently took a serious fall that required surgery. Thankfully, the ability of an ambulance under aid was not competed. When that happened several months ago, the sixth situation could be tragically different the next time, given how often vehicles on Two Blossom are clogging and blocking our narrow private road. Thank you for your attention to my letter. I look forward to further amplifying my concerns in person at your hearing on the Burns' appeal, which I understand is scheduled to occur on October nineteenth. And I read those letters, all the letters into the record with the hopes that people will not reiterate everything that I've read into the record. With that, I will ask, who is going to speak, present the appeal on behalf of the Burns?
I'm going to do that, Madam Chair, Ben Timon. Thank you very much. And I appreciate you reading those neighbor letters into the record. So I do represent Sam and Tracy Byrne with me virtually here in one of the Hollywood squares is my colleague, Megan Huggan, and Sam and Tracy Byrne are here as well. And our architect, Chris Dalmas, uh, who, from Design Associates is here as well. So I, Madam Chair, with your indulgence, I plan to, um, you know, not retread in great detail the fairly comprehensive submissions that we've made, but to, to try to cover um, each of the areas where we believe this project has violated the special permit of the ZVA and the approved special permit plans. Um, but I, I, I note that you said at the beginning that you may want to take it topic by topic, so I'll start with the first topic on my list and then, um, whatever, you know, the chairs and preferences in terms of, you know, whether I move on to topic two or whether you'd like to um, hear from others by topic.
No, I think I'd rather have you give your presentation on all the issues than the owners of Two Blossom can respond and then we'll hear from Mr. Orlando and then, then we'll go item by item.
Great, thank you. Um, great. And just, uh, for, just to clarify, so I, I plan to speak and then, um, Chris Dalmas, the architect, um, would be following me, if that's acceptable, um, to, to handle the impervious surface issue. And then Sam Byrne, um, and that would conclude our affirmative presentation, um, this evening.
And how long do you expect that to take?
Um, I think that it may go about forty-five minutes, just given the number of issues, but I'll try to be as concise as I possibly can. And of course, be happy to, thank you and be happy to answer, obviously, any questions that the board or anyone else has. So first of all, we completely agree that this is not a a second bite at the apple of appealing the two thousand nineteen special permit that this board issued. Um, it's, it's clear what, what this is, and this is a project which we believe it unquestionably violates a number of aspects of that special permit and of the approved special permit plans. And so we're actually the ones coming forward and asking the board to, um, require that the Smiths adhere to that special permit. And we're asking the board to enforce the special permit. So we're, um, on the side of the special permit and here to point out what we believe are material and damaging discrepancies between that approval and what's actually been built. Um, I'd like to start with the pool house and just by way of, um, format here, Madam Chair, um, under the hybrid format, it, it certainly appears to me that none of you have screens, and so I'll just be referring to documents that I understand you have in front of you, unless there is a screen there where if I wanted to share a document on a screen, um, perhaps you could let me know whether that's something that's acceptable in this hybrid format.
Yeah, I believe it's set up to, um, share, so you can share your screen.
Okay, perfect. So I think maybe we can, maybe I'll do that now if that's all right, if, if I could be given the ability to share my screen, because I think, um, it may just be useful and quicker to, to go through of some of the different elements here.
Yeah, it is set up so that you can share.
Excellent. So let me do that. So it says host disabled participant screen sharing. So I think the host will have to make me a co-host or something like that. Or enable anybody to share.
I did, I didn't enable it. Wait a minute. I need to get rid of this. Does anybody know how to get rid of this? Okay, I think it should be all set.
Great. Thank you. All right. So, um, what I have up first is, is just to orient everybody to what the approved plan is. This is the ZVA approved plan from twenty, August of two thousand nineteen. Um, and you can see that um, on the right-hand side, although the yeah, so ZVA approved plan, August thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. So this is the approved plan. The ZVA decision itself actually, um, attached a five-page plan set. And the site plan that was attached was, was, was an earlier version, but I think everyone agrees that this is the ZVA approved plan of, of August thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. And the reason I want to point it out is just to, to remind everyone that you have a situation in a res, single residence district E where the lot coverage by structures limitation is fifteen percent, the impervious surface percentage limitation by right is twenty-five percent. And this half-acre lot, as the board would remember from that time, was nonconforming in both of those respects. Uh, but the board, you know, based on the proposal that was put in front of you uh, then, decided that that proposal was not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, even though the nonconformities with respect to lot coverage and impervious surface coverage and other aspects would be worsened. Um, this particular plan, and, and Mr. Dalmas will touch on this as well, broke out proposed structure coverage, which I'm blowing up here. And you can see that the proposed structure coverage was allowed at twenty-nine point eight percent based on those five different structures that are mentioned. And several of those have, of course, increased dramatically in size, um, such that the structure coverage is now somewhere in the neighborhood, I believe, of thirty-two percent. Mr. Dalmas will, will, um, will go over that. So I'd now like to just take a look at some of these elements. So starting with the pool house, I think everybody understands that the pool house is considerably larger than, uh, what was, what was approved. Um, it was approved at a hundred and eighty square feet. It was described as, um, an, an equipment shed in some of the plans. And when we filed this appeal, which is the document we're looking at here, um, it's part of our August eighth appeal to the board. Uh, we, you know, said, we don't know how big it is because the dimensions hadn't been provided. Um, we now know based on dimensions that have been provided by the applicant that it's somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred and eighty square feet. Um, that's at least by, um, the amount of roof, for example, uh, added to, uh, the other elements for impervious surface calculations. So the pool house is, is a, is more than two and a half times the size of, uh, what was allowed. And, you know, you were all there on Saturday and saw how, how large this, this pool house is. Now, I want to pause on, um, the pool house for a second, just as a procedural matter. One of the, um, requests that we made to Building Inspector Orlando uh, in the request for zoning enforcement, that's what, that is what brings us here today, is that he, um, you know, put a stop to the work on the pool house and also determine how much bigger it is and what was allowed under the special permit. Um, and he took action on that that we, that we agree with. He, he said cease and desist on the pool house. Um, he, in his letter to the Smiths, said that the construction of this large structure without a building permit is a violation of the Massachusetts Building Code and that the Smiths need to apply for a building permit. So the posture of this particular aspect of, of the case is that the Smiths in September through their representatives did apply for a building permit for this, um, for this pool house. And there's been no action taken on that, uh, application, to my understanding. We double-checked with the building department, uh, yesterday and today. Um, so what we plan to do on this front, um, and maybe this makes things easier for the ZVA at this, at this particular hearing, is we will submit materials to Mr. Orlando explaining why we believe a building permit, uh, cannot be lawfully issued for the pool house. The short reason is because it's going to require a variance under very clear case law regarding brand-new buildings on nonconforming sites, uh, undersized sites that are nonconforming for lot coverage. You can't have an expansion, an extension or an alteration of a pre-existing nonconforming structure where it's a brand-new structure. And so there's case law that makes clear that a variance would be required for this, for this pool house, and that's notwithstanding um, a, an SJC decision called Bilalta, which, um, my friend attorney Globski, uh, in twenty nineteen.
Through all of this, we're not speaking about anything with regard to variance tonight.
Okay, right.
To is the pool house larger than what was approved?
Right. So it's clear that the pool house is considerably larger and that will play into, of course, the impervious surface, um, uh, issues. The pool itself was approved at six hundred and forty-eight square feet. Um, the calculations that are in the latest, um, submissions from the applicant uh, have it at seven hundred and twenty-two square feet. So the pool is about seventy-five square feet larger than what was approved. And this is, you know, another example of where in the ZVA decision in two thousand nineteen, one of the conditions of that decision, which is obviously very standard for any special permit, is quote, "construction and improvements to be substantially in accordance with the plans filed with the application as modified by proposed site plan revised garage eight twenty-eight nineteen," which is the plan that I put up at the beginning. So, you know, this is part of just about every special permit where it says, um, yes, you, you know, build it in accordance with the plans. And that, and again, that's why we're here. We're not here to to rehash the, the wisdom of that special permit. We're here to ask the board to enforce um, the special permit, including that key provision that it, the, the project could be built in accordance with plans. Um, the spa, the so-called spa, we've talked about that, that, um, has been built in the setback. And Mr. Dalmas will talk about, uh, how that plays into both structure coverage and impervious surface coverage. All right. I'd like to talk about the, the decks and, you know, again, the reason that the decks are part of this appeal is that the five-page plan set that was submitted by the Smiths to this board in two thousand nineteen did not depict any decks. And, and here's what I have on the screen here, which is page four of the um, summary of zoning violations that's part of, uh, our appeal is all that was depicted about decks. Um, as you can see, there's, there's an outline here that's showing some extension of roofing. Um, but absolutely no decks. And the ZVA decision and the special permit application, and I've looked at the entire special permit filing, um, none of it had any showed at all. Um, decks. And so again, the decks that have been constructed, which on the east side are shown here, and you've seen this from your sidewalk. And on the west side is here. Those have been constructed not in accordance with the plans filed with the application, uh, which is one of the conditions of the special permit. Um, Sam Byrne, when he speaks, we'll talk a little bit about this deck. This was one of the things that, you know, the Burns first noticed as, wait a minute, this was not anything that we ever knew was going to be on the plans. And because of the narrowness of Blossom Lane, you know, the, this, this is straight out of the front, uh, windows of, of the Burns. So this is right in the, in their line of sight. And there, there are privacy concerns um, that are real here and that had the Smiths presented the plan that they actually intended to build back in two thousand nineteen, like these decks, the board may have well come up with a different, uh, The board may have well come up with a different um decision on would it be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, including issues of privacy for a butters? So that brings us to um the front entrance expansion. Here's what the plans showed, these again, the ZBA plans. You know, really nothing here uh that would it it all be a uh an indication of what the Smiths ended up building? Which. In the building permit plans were this. So here's a an instance where. Um the building permit plans departed. To a substantial degree from the special permit plans. But I think as the board hopefully will agree. The Smiths should not get the benefit of the doubt for. Things that that maybe slipped through the cracks on building permit stage. Um they should have built a project that is was in conformity with the special permit plans. These photos here from a few months ago, um you've you've seen the front of the house. It's obviously a lot different now. And it has quite elaborate, you know, not only retaining walls, but stairs and landings and the like. Which also play quite prominently into the impervious surface analysis. Now the retaining walls, so. Um attorney Barry, who represents the um the Smiths, you know, pointed out that in the approved ZBA plan, it talked about an iron fence on a stone foundation. Um. That is well and good, but there was nothing at all in. Um the plans or reference in the ZBA hearing, I read the minutes to the hearing and the decision of the type. And size and prominence of the retaining walls that have been put on this site. And these are, you know, from August, they've obviously grown up quite a bit since then, but these are substantial. Um retaining walls. And as Mr. Dalmas will talk about um. Under the definition of impervious surface in the bylaws of Manchester, retaining walls should be counted. Um particularly when they're of the size of of what they are here. At this project. So again, this is more of the front retaining walls. From August. The rear retaining walls are. An issue as well. So again, there was absolutely no reference. In on the plans. Or at the hearing. About the so-called stone and masonry retaining wall. Which. Is not only an enormous. Wall, as you can see here, again, in August, the the pillars that were erected. To begin. Um constructing this huge wall in the back. But the elevation in this area was changed substantially, and that's another issue that we raised with um. Building inspector Orlando, and I'll be touching on the elevation issue a little in a little bit more detail in a second. Excuse me. Again, more of the retaining walls. None of this was shown on a plan. So the ZBA was not made aware of this in twenty nineteen, neither were any of the neighbors. Uh nor were they made aware of the tremendous grade changes and amount of earthworks that took place uh to help make that. Wall a reality. Okay, the garage. So what what I want to um. Show you on the garage. Is this is the this is the five page submission that. The Smiths. Included in their special permit application back in twenty nineteen. So you had an existing conditions plan. You had this plan, which ended up being changed um to change the size of the garage. And the plan that I showed you at the beginning of my presentation is actually the ZBA approved plan that replaced this this particular plan. Um and then some renderings, including the little bold outline piece that I referenced um, you know, where where there are now some decks. And then this. This is everything that the um. According to the file, everything at the Smiths put in in twenty nineteen about. What they were going to do with the garage. So. Again, this is what the neighbors knew about. This is what people like Robin Swayze. And uh Martha Brown knew about. And. This is what they should have built. You've seen the the garage that has been constructed. And just to, you know, show some aerials of it. You know, here's here's an aerial shot of the garage as constructed. So. Even if it's the case, which we don't. Think has been verified because um. The as-built, as Mr. Dalmas will explain, actually don't have area dimensions on them, which is odd. Um. But even if this the garage that's been constructed. Is on the same footprint. That doesn't matter for purposes of respectfully. This board's analysis of what was approved in twenty nineteen, what was represented to the board as. The project and what was approved and what was actually built. If the footprint's the same, which we don't think has been validated at all, it doesn't mean that they could build a garage that um. That is um. You know. As tall as they can make it without exceeding height limits and zoning. No. Um you know, this garage is substantially bigger, more prominent. And more intrusive than what was represented. And you can see in this picture that I have up now. Um Ms. Swayze's property. And I think you can understand, I don't represent Ms. Swayze, but she, you know, submitted a letter and maybe will speak at some point during the hearing. Um you can see why. She would be um concerned about this particular overage um. Of the approved garage. It it absolutely looms over her property. And this is also depicted in this particular photograph. There's the back of the garage. There's Ms. Swayze's property. So.
Fair melish, may I ask if we could, if the if if the applicant could could could. Contain their comments to the presentation that they're making before the board. Mr. Diamond just said he doesn't. Represent these folks and they're going to have a chance to speak later. Thank you. This is Julie Berry representing the Smiths.
Thank you. Yes, you should only speak. To your matters, not to other. Of people who are not.
Right. Um but you know, as we as we put in our RZE and as we've put in the appeal, um. The substantial difference in the garage as constructed and the garage as approved. Is one of at least eight features of this project. Um that we hope will um. Compel the board to simply say to the Smiths, um you need to build the project that was approved, not the project that you want to build that is. Such materially noncompliant. Uh from the approved project. Okay, um that brings us. To the issue of. Grading. So in our um. Request for zoning enforcement to Mr. Orlando. Let me take the screen off for a moment. We pointed out that um. That there had been a tremendous amount of uh fill and sand brought in and the elevation had been uh increased dramatically. This was just by the observation of of the Burns and others. And we asked um Mr. Orlando to look into that. He um as part of his RZE response. He required that the Smiths submit a plan showing the amounts of topographical changes that have occurred on the site. Um. And I think respectfully to Mr. Orlando, I think that that more investigation needs to be done on that because. As we pointed out in our correspondence to the board um of yesterday. Um there is a a special permit provision within the zoning bylaws, as this board knows. Called a topographical change uh special permit. And there are two criteria in that part of the bylaw that if triggered. Would require a special permit. One. Is that if there is a result in change of elevation from the preconstruction elevation of more than five feet at any point. At any point within the setback area or. If there is a deposit. Of more than twenty cubic yards of earth, clay, sand, gravel, rock within the setback area. If either of those and there are other criteria as well are met. A special permit from the planning board um for topographical changes required. And part of that process is a lighting plan and a whole bunch of other things that um that would be appropriate on the site. Why am I bringing this up to this board? Well, because we raised the issue in our request for zoning enforcement. We asked the building inspector to look into that. And we, that request remains open. We believe that the building inspector. Could still, within his authority and within his jurisdiction. Determine, for example, that yes, there's definitely more than twenty cubic yards that were deposited. You'll hear.
We'll let building inspectors speak to that. You don't need to tell him what he should be doing.
Um no, understood, um Madam Chairman, but this is this is this is important because it's also, it's in, it's it's in front of the board because. We're we're appealing um the RZE response from Mr. Orlando. There were parts of it that we agreed with, like like. Making the Smiths submit for a building permit on the pool house. And there are parts of it that we thought were insufficient. And one of the parts that we thought was insufficient, and we're now putting in front of this board. On the appeal of the RZE response. Is the the failure to um to require the Smiths to follow zoning with respect to. Um the elevation.
We're sorry, we're running way over time. I'm sorry.
Okay, no, I appreciate I appreciate your indulgence on the time. So um so that is, you know, on on top of graphical change. One of the important issues. Um in conclusion, Madam Chair, and then I'll turn it over to uh Mr. Dalmas. We're asking the zoning board of appeals to determine that based on the evidence of what's been presented and what you've observed yourself. To determine that this project as built. Um is materially noncompliant with the approved special permit and special permit plans. That all work on the project should stop. Um until such time as the project. Is brought into compliance with those special permit plans. And, you know, we respectfully believe, and this is this is one of the only other areas where the twenty nineteen. Process is relevant. It's relevant again because we're saying uphold that special permit. But we're also confident that had the Smiths and their team in twenty nineteen presented to the board the project that they're actually building today. That the board would have found, would have come to a very different conclusion. And so. Um if the. Smiths want to build this project, they need to submit um an application to this board for an amendment of the special permit. And to demonstrate that the project as built. Um is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Uh until they've received that type of an approval or the other kinds of approvals that we believe. Um are now required. Um. Then the board needs to order respectfully that um that this project be. Reconstructed, scaled back, demolished as necessary in places to conform. With the approved plans that this board issued in twenty nineteen. So I appreciate your time. I know I went on for a while. I very much appreciate the opportunity to present. And I'd now like to introduce uh Chris Dalmas, AI. A uh who will be talking uh about um impervious surfaces and going through some of the documents that he submitted uh today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um I am also going to need to share my screen. Uh I just have two documents that uh. I would like to review with you. Uh that are primarily on the subject of uh calculations for structure and impervious surface calculations. So.
Uh Madam Chair, this is Julie Berry for the Smiths. Uh just a point of clarification, is this document that's about to be shared, the one that was sent over? About two hours before this hearing and was a decision made about whether that could be used tonight?
The document has been distributed to the board. We don't have a a firm cutoff.
Okay, we were led to understand that somebody was going to be talking to the board about whether it would be admitted. So then we will have something to be for the board to review in response to that, given the late hour.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Mr. Dalmas, would you like to go ahead?
Sure, let's see um. Okay, uh do you see uh? I've got uh on my end, um the interim as-built that was prepared by Hancock Associates, the civil engineers for. How about that?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'm gonna zoom in a little bit.
How long are you gonna, for how long are you gonna speak?
Uh ten minutes, the best. Is that acceptable?
Yep, ten would be the most.
Okay, great. So um this uh this is a plan, I'm gonna. Uh of that's prepared by Hancock Associates, Civil Engineers for the project. Uh when we were asked to sort of come on board and evaluate the calculations for structure and impervious surfaces. My uh response and commentary is, well, you you need a certified. Uh plot plan, uh survey as-built, prepared by civil engineer and Hancock Associates. Certainly the most appropriate uh organization to do that work. Uh so what we have uh here and there there, we've overlaid some information on onto their interim as-built. And what they've. Provided us, uh for instance, let me just go to the pool house. Do you see my cursor?
Yes.
Okay, so uh we were provided grades at these corners. Of all the these elements in blue, okay, and uh. We, they did not, though they provided that perimeter, and it basically this relates to impervious surfaces. Uh here, because it goes to the limit of the overhang um that uh uh. They provide that perimeter, but they did not provide, and I don't understand why, um the area tabulations. So. We were faced with essentially having to import this document uh into our CAD program. And then prepare the area tabulations that you see here. So they're not certified. Uh that's really the domain of Hancock Associates to do that. But I think it's sort of a reasonable facsimile of what uh we're looking at at on the property. So uh the items in blue. Uh are items, elements, structures uh that have been on a perimeter basis. Uh documented by. Hancock Associates. Uh you'll also notice that uh down in the lower right hand corner, you'll see these hatch, this hatch portion here. That's a proposed retaining wall uh that was not documented by Hancock, but we've essentially pulled that. Uh information off of uh Carpenter Neely's um design plan, site plan. Uh to essentially tabulate the areas of of that work. Additionally, there's a concrete pad here that um. Uh and a concrete pad here to the backside of the pool house. There are some concrete pads on the backside of the residence and also um that have not yet been documented by. Um Hancock, but they show up on the design drawing. So essentially, we we've established um uh. Area tabulations for those elements. So um so that's our sort of methodology uh for essentially. Oops. Now I want to get to. Okay. So I trust you're looking at what essentially was a uh. An Excel document. Uh you all see that here, which is entitled, okay, two blossom lane, impertious calculations for uh existing and proposed. So what happens in the left column is essentially the aggregate of the. Uh area tabulations that we developed uh on the previous drawing. Um some of these numbers uh are coincidental and match exactly with Carpenter nearly, not all of them. Um but by our calculations, we come up with six thousand eight hun-. Six thousand eight hundred and twenty six uh square feet. Um and uh for proposed structures, giving us uh thirty one point seven percent. Uh for proposed structures, not impervious surfaces. And this is over to the right Carpenter Neely's, and this is what was approved uh by. Not impervious surfaces. And this is over to the right Carpenter Neely's, and this is what was approved uh, by the ZBA on, in August of two thousand nineteen was twenty-nine point eight percent. So I think that's the important distinction. Uh, these are not, uh, most of these numbers or some of these numbers are not certified. So we've had to essentially surmise from the information that has been provided to us to essentially come to this conclusion. Uh, then our next column essentially is proposed structures and impervious surfaces. Uh, the same methodology uh, that was employed to prepare the upper uh. Round of numbers uh, was employed here. Uh, we come up with um, thirty-seven point five percent for proposed structures and impervious surfaces. Uh, whereas at the, the um, most recent site plan submitted by Carpenter McNeely and based on Hancock's as-built. Uh, they're showing a percentage of thirty-four point five percent. That, uh, that's essentially, I, that's the important key here is the comparison between what was approved. Uh, I think that um, uh, also I think there's a, Ben, you can speak to this better than I, but a thirty-five percent uh, limit. On uh, proposed structures and impervious surfaces and by our calculations. Uh, they, this project is over that limit and that threshold.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, um, I'd now like to ask Sam Byrne to, to speak.
And um, Mr. Byrne, how long do you plan to speak?
Decidedly shorter. Three or four minutes, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No, three, three or four.
And I'm, and I'm gonna be decidedly less technical here and I, I hope you'll indulge me. Um. You know, first of all, Tracy and I wish we didn't have to be here and consume your time. It's extremely uncomfortable for us. And really our only uh, challenging experience with the town after our twenty-five and Tracy's. Fifty years of living here as families. Uh, I appreciate for sure that. That you're all volunteers and I'm grateful for the fact that we have a town that can be managed by our neighbors and peers. Um, and relying on that, I also believe we have to rely on the honesty and transparency of people who are applying to you. And that, once they have permits or variances, that those are complied with. So. Um, it's absolutely true that at the outset of the Smiths intentions here, Tracy and I tried to be extremely supportive, give them advice. Do as any neighbor would do, uh, even suggested that maybe they were trying to put too much in on the property. Before we knew about half the stuff that was going in. Um, and with that came an implied understanding that this miss would be communicative. Work with us as neighbors on issues that we had. Be diligent about mitigating the impacts of construction and addressing our concerns about privacy. And unfortunately, I think as you've heard from other neighbors, after the building permit was obtained here, none of those things were reciprocated. And that's what brought us here. It wasn't about, um. You know, we, we were concerned about our privacy. We were concerned about the um, changes in the grade and other things that were going on the property. We, we tried for a long time to get um, copies of uh, landscape plans that existed, it turns out, but were never shared with us. And I think largely because there were so many changes that it was, you know, not prudent for those to be shared with us. Um, I'll make one case in point, which I only discovered this weekend when we were all on the property. Which is about parking on the street. And for the first time ever, after being assured that there would be no parking on a street where the town has posted no parking, toe zone. Um, that we are all concerned about, that Donna spoke up about it at the hearing, that I made a point about in my conversations with the Smiths. Only after this very weekend, when you guys were out there, right here for the first time, that there was gonna be no permanent parking. That was the first time Rod Smith shared that um, qualifier. And I just make the point about parking as being a, one of these many fundamental issues. That kind of sums up about the entirety of how this has gone, you know? The idea that an ambulance or a fire truck isn't gonna be able to get down the street, doesn't matter whether someone's parking there permanently or not permanently. You can't just go create a curb cut and put in a bunch of pavers so that you can park on the street and gate your driveway. That, that seems so unreasonable to us. It was an assurance we got right back from the first hearing that was here. And then for the first time ever, only this week did we hear it was not gonna be permanent parking. And I don't know what the distinction between the two things are. But as Donna points out, and as we've experienced directly with a fourteen-year-old that went into respiratory distress. An ambulance getting into our house is very important to us, and it's completely unreasonable that after a hundred years. People could just decide they're gonna start parking on Blossom Lane because they don't want people to pull into their driveway. Um, I, I just, that's just a point that speaks to all of these issues that we've had ourselves and some of our neighbors have had with this project as it's progressed. It, it's clear to us that these plans and designs and the pool house and everything else were, were well-established and that that wasn't shared with you. And it wasn't shared with us. Had it been shared with us, you may have come to a different conclusion, but certainly the neighbor's support would have been very, very different about having. Us, at one point, a retaining wall that's taller than me. Uh, on the side of the Mason's property or in the back by the halls and the Swayze's. And the Augusts. The, these are, these are massive, massive changes from what was ever presented to us. These gas lamps across the back of the property and across the front of the property that had never been presented, the retaining walls since with four-foot footings on them. All of this stuff. And we tried to engage with the Smiths about trying to come up with screening plans or something that would mitigate our concerns about. The porch that we never saw that looks directly into our master bathroom, bedroom and kitchen. Um, and we got nowhere. And that's the only reason we're here. And again, as I shared with you, it's extremely uncomfortable for us. I also struggle with, um. In many cases, you know, an architect could point to the builder and say, well, we didn't approve building. A massive pool house with bathrooms and showers in it. Or, or we didn't approve that the pool would be a few hundred square feet bigger, or we didn't approve of a sixteen-person grotto. To be built inside, you know, we, we didn't, those weren't on the plans, we didn't approve. But in this case, there's no distinction between the architect and the builder. It's this, they're one and the same. So sitting there and saying, okay, we're just gonna move these things back. All of these things had been planned previous to the hearing that was presented to you guys and the plans that were presented to us. And to me, that seems just re, like remarkably deceptive. Um, and I, I just, I don't think you can point to someone and say, we're just gonna fix this, we're gonna fix that, and we didn't, or we didn't mean to do it. And they, that people should be rewarded for bad behavior or lack of transparency. Um. We're now at this point where I know we're not gonna speak to a variance or a special permit or all those other things. But it's pretty clear to anybody by the naked eye that what was built wasn't what was approved by. E, either this board or what would be reasonable for any half-acre lot in town. It's an extraordinary change in grade. In one day, I witnessed, in one morning, nine. Dump trailer, dump trucks delivering fill to the property, which in and of itself would have been over. Uh, I don't know, but, uh, an average dump trailer, dump trucks, twelve yards. I mean, over twice what would be required just in and of itself to get a permit from. Uh, for grade change. And all of these things have continued, and despite our efforts to try to resolve them amicably, we got absolutely nowhere. Um, as soon as the ninety-day appeal period was over in this case, we got no more attention, nor did the other neighbors from the Smiths. Now, the Smiths attorneys and others now suggest that all these things can be approved as ancillary structures. Any reasonable person who is out there would see that they are absurdly large, they have a material impact on the neighborhood. That all of these things combined have a, a real impact on our privacy and the quality of our experience on the street. Now, whether a variance is required or not.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. You've gone away with your time.
I appreciate it. I'm, just please let, I'd like to finish just for one second. Thank you. It, people talk about this being a second bite at the apple. We were never shown the apple. So rewarding bad behavior is something that I don't think should be something that is, is appropriate in this case. We all attempted to be good neighbors and we're the ones that are gonna end up suffering for that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, other than just directing the board's attention to um. To the, uh, the zoning bylaws and its definition of impervious surface, which is the reason that Mr. Dalmas um, included. The retaining walls, the large retaining walls in his calculation. Um, we don't have anything else, but I just wanna very, very, it take me two seconds if I may, it says. Any material or structure on or above the ground that prevents water infiltrating the underlying soil. Uh, impervious surfaces include without limitation. Roads, paved parking lots, sidewalks and rooftops. So the fact that these are structures that prevent water infiltrating the underlying soil. Um, is the reason why Mr. Dalmas, and I want to speak for you, Chris, but I believe that this was your conclusion in the impervious surface analysis. That this is why you um, included the retaining walls five hundred square feet and, and, and more.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That, uh, that's all that we have for our affirmative presentation. We're obviously happy to answer any questions that you have, but I understand that you're gonna move on to a different. Phase of the hearing now.
Right, we're not taking any, we're not asking any questions at this point in time.
Thank you very much.
Julie Barry, are you gonna speak on behalf of the Smiths?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the board, and thank you for your time. Uh, the first thing that I'd like to point out, and I really like, I appreciate the chair's efforts while reading the letters. Although I don't think it was necessarily a definitive determination of what is or is not relevant at this hearing, but I would like to point out. Uh, two very specific things. We are here on an appeal of the Burns's. Uh, dissatisfaction with the building inspector's decision in response to their request for enforcement. And that request for enforcement is dated June twenty-first, twenty-two. And that request for enforcement on page four of four sets forth. Three steps that the Burns requested the building inspector take. Number one, to provide a certified plot plan prepared by a registered professional engineer that accurately depicts what has been constructed. And is planned to be constructed and appropriate construction documents for the pool house specifically. You can check that box that was done. And Mr. Uh, Orlando's response of July seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Specifically refers to this. Uh, and that was provided, and it's very easy and it to, to, to fastly dismiss without any evidence. Uh, this or the as-built plan that was certified by a professional engineer from Massachusetts. Not an architect, not an attorney, a professional engineer who certified the as-built plans, and we've seen nothing to the contrary. And in fact, the building inspector has not said anything to the contrary, and we point out that the certified as-built plans. Lead to the further discussion as to whether the pool house exceeds what was uh, depicted in the special permit and building permit plans. So that first request has been dealt with. Check. Second one, inspect the site as soon as possible to ascertain, among other things. The total amount of as-built lot coverage of structures and impervious surfaces. And to what extent the thirty-five percent limitation under the special permit has been exceeded. That has also been responded to. They received exactly what they wanted there. The building inspector checked it based on the as-built plans. Uh, the, the coverage does not exceed thirty-five percent, which is what was come, uh, applied in the special permit. And third, and also complied with was the Burns request that the building inspector issue a cease and desist order. Concerning the pool house structure and the requirement for additional relief. Um, that's it. Not the, the retaining wall has come up in a dispute over whether walls. Are to be considered impervious structures under the Manchester by the Sea zoning bylaw. They are not. They are specifically excluded. In my letter to this board dated October thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, before the site visit. Uh, the walls are expressly excluded, not only by this board, but it, it makes perfect sense that they would be. They're also excluded under Mass DEP's stormwater standards. They are not impervious surfaces. In fact, they allow for infiltration. So that the, 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 for an architect to come before you and suggested his reading of the bylaw. Is that these uh, walls count as impervious surface. Well, the town zoning enforcement officer who is charged with interpretation of the bylaws is Mr. Orlando. And the bylaws do not indicate, they expressly set out what is considered an impervious surface, and walls are not in that definition. So uh, there really isn't any more discussion that needs to be had, frankly. About all of these things that are before the board in response to the appeal as set forth by the Burns's. And yet here we are. At eight-thirty, uh, discussing things like construction and alleged pacing of construction and all sorts of horrible things that the. The, the Smiths have allegedly done of this grossly outsized, oversized project. When the engineered certified stamped engineered documents show quite specifically. That other than those areas which have already been addressed with the building inspector, specifically the spa. And specifically the pool house, which construction has stopped. The Smiths have applied for a building permit, and that's an issue for another day. So there really isn't anything else here that the board needs to address. However, because there has been information presented here, you know, including. By letter from folks claiming about drainage, well, there is an engineered drainage plan that directs all of the drainage stormwater from this structure. Both the garage and the house into uh, the, the, the appropriate piping that leads to the leaching field beneath the, or not the leaching field, but dry well that's in the driveway. The, all of these issues. Except for what specifically before this board could have been addressed. It was a twenty-day appeal period, not a ninety-day appeal period. And it could, all of these things could have been appealed quite easily if any of these folks felt like it was an issue. But before I turn this over to um, to Stephen Harrington to address some of the issues regarding. The, the walls and other issues that have been raised here, and he's gonna provide you with the evidence. Uh, the, these, these issues that are being raised now about construction pacing. Issues that are being raised now about drainage, none of these were before Mr. Orlando. The only thing this board needs to do is determine whether uh, Mr. Orlando. Uh, acted appropriately in his response to the uh, request of the Burns for enforcement. And contrary to Mr. Timman's statement, there is not such a thing as an open-ended enforcement request before the building inspector. Nor is there such a thing as an open-ended appeal before this board. So that anything anybody wants to complain about ad nauseam between now and the time that an occupancy permit is issued for this project. That this board must consider. That is simply false. There's no way that that can be supported under case law or this board's rules and regulations. The three issues before this, uh, the building inspector, he decided the appeal specifically is on those issues, and that is the appeal that is lodged before this board. Any other issues are outside the board's purview at this time. Because they didn't ask the building inspector for enforcement of those issues. So I'd asked Mr. Harrington to um, discuss the, uh, for the first instance, I'm gonna try to take this as quickly as possible because I know we're all tired. Uh, but to ask Mr. Harrington specifically to address the retaining wall issue or the wall issue at this time. Steve, can you come on, please? Steve, are you there?
Yep. I'm coming in, yes. Hello. Hi, my name's Stephen Harrington. I'm uh, one of the architects involved with uh, Carpenter and McNeil. And um. I wanted to speak a little bit about the uh, the inclusion of retaining walls as. Uh, lot coverage because that's kind of essential to the overall lot coverage discussion. As Julie said, um, the code is pretty clear on the fact that retaining walls are not included as lot coverage. And we also have two signed letters from two Massachusetts engineers. Which indicate that. Walls, retaining walls, stone walls are not included as. As impervious surfaces. And if I may, if I could share a screen, if it's important, I can show you those two letters. Uh, that um. That emphasize that point.
You should be able to show enough.
All right, can you see what's on my screen?
Yes.
Okay, uh, this is a letter from uh Wayne Jalbert, the president of Hancock Associates, which. Um, has been referred to already as a uh the. The uh engineer that has been doing the as-bills. Um, and it says, in accordance with the request for my experience in reporting for various elements. Uh, in terms of impervious surfaces areas, I'm happy to offer my professional opinion. I have never in thirty-seven years included stone walls or fences in these calculations. I've never been asked or directed by a board or town engineer to include them. I've never seen them written in municipal codes. And lastly, I've never seen them. Uh, other licensed professional land server include them. That's from the president of Hancock Associates. The other, we have another letter which is from. Uh, Dan McCritchy, who is the president of. Uh, DC McCritchy, who is another engineer. That we work with quite regularly. And his opinion, as stated here. The Manchester by the Sea bylaw defines impervious surfaces as any material or structure on or above the ground that prevents water from infiltrating the soil. Impervious surfaces include without limitation roads paved. Parking lots, sidewalks and rooftops. Stone walls and the accompanying aggregates that are placed under and around them generally do not prevent water from infiltrating the underlying soils. And at as would be required to meet impervious surfaces definition by law. So. The the takeaway from this is that we are very certain that. The. Stone walls should not be included. And if I can refer back to um. This plan which they provided and shows. The calculate, they did not provide the calculation for this wall, but I actually happen to know what it is. It's five hundred and sixty square feet. And if you were to remove that five hundred and sixty square feet from this calculation. Our. Our lot coverage. Is. Under thirty-five percent. According to their own um, their own calculation. And so I just wanted to reiterate that. The concern about thirty-five percent. Lot coverage is. Is unfounded and is proven here with the engineered plan and their own analysis. That we are are not over the thirty-five percent.
Thank you.
And I think I would like to have Mark uh Glofski, who is our uh the attorney who is. Present um in handling the. The initial special permit uh talk about the. The decision as it was written and the thirty-five percent lock coverage.
Thank you, Mr. Glofski.
Okay, uh, good evening. Uh. I did have the pleasure of appearing before the zoning board a few years ago. Uh, on behalf of the Smiths. And uh, I am well aware of the discussion that took place and the terms of the decision. And the rationale behind the conditions of the decision. Uh, if if you read the decision, uh, page four of the decision that uh issued. Uh. Uh, the chairman asked the zoning board members if they're inclined to condition this application. For a limit to impervious surface at thirty-five percent and the members agreed. And there was a condition consequently added to the decision. That specifically specified that lot coverage by structures and impervious surfaces. Uh, could not exceed thirty-five percent. Uh, there's been some discussion about. Uh, coverage by structures uh as being a separate and distinct uh condition. However, we recognized on on the night of the hearing. That there were likely to be changes in the field as the project progressed. And the primary concern was. With respect to total lot coverage. And that's why there isn't a separate condition with respect to coverage by structures. It's only coverage by structures and impervious uh surfaces that is listed as a condition. Uh. I'll only want to talk about uh one other thing that was mentioned and I don't want to go uh afield. Uh, it was suggested that the pool is seventy-five square feet larger than the pool that was approved. And I would respectfully suggest that that seventy-five square feet. Would be consistent with the condition number one in the decision that said that construction of improvements. Shall be substantially in accordance with the plans filed. I think that the the deviation by seventy-five square feet uh does not exceed. Uh, does does not become a substantial deviation. Uh, other than that, uh, I'm available to answer any questions the board may have about. Uh, the decision and uh follow up on any uh. Arguments that were made by Attorney Barry.
Thank you, if I may. Uh, I just have a couple other remarks and then I know the board I would like to move on quickly and we agree. Um, a a number of these items that we believe are outside the purview of this board's uh authority and discretion tonight as to the scope of the appeal before them. Uh, we nonetheless address them in my letter to this board of October thirteenth. I'm not going to belabor it by reading those over again. There are a couple of points. That I would like to raise though, and particularly as to some of the um. Issues uh concerned there. Mr. Burns suggested that he is not, there are no landscaping plans or he has not seen landscaping plans or whatever the landscaping plans are, they're insufficient, even though he hasn't seen them. However, uh, it is my understanding that Mr. Burns not only saw them, but that those landscaping plans were changed. A couple of times to address Mr. Burns' concerns. Uh, we have a copy of those landscaping plans with us tonight. If the board would like to see them, I'd be happy to have them put on the screen and. We can go over them. We also have three D crops from the three D uh screens that show exactly what the Burns view would be. Uh, from this project when the landscaping is in. So we have those things available for the board. Or will I will note that the landscaping plan itself was provided, a copy was provided in the my. Letter to the board of October thirteenth. So, but if there are any questions, we're prepared to answer those tonight. The, but there is a little bit of hyperbole and emotion going on here is. To the gross oversize of this project, the the fact that it's going to stop. People from being able to get care, whether they're having an asthma attack or whatever it is. And some of that hyperbole really needs is 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 misplaced here. There hasn't been any acceleration by the Smiths who are acting undercover of night to get this project finished. In fact. They stopped building the pool house, which is the only arguably non-compliant structure on this plan. They stopped building it. They required, they requested a special permit and did everything the building inspector asked them to do and I and would respectfully defer to the building inspector's. Statements in that regard. However, uh, there, there has been no intentional acceleration construction. This project was held back as a number of construction projects are due to COVID and supply chain issues. Before hearing these latest complaints just tonight about how the project is going too fast. They had, they, the only thing they had heard is that it was going too slow. But the complaints that were raised here tonight by the comment letters that were submitted were never brought to the Smiths at any point in time until tonight. So we would respectfully request that if the board has any questions about any of the materials we submitted, we would be happy to go over those. Uh, but uh, I think we are quite clear as to the fact that the. Building inspector answered the requests that were made of him and that's all that's before the board this evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam, uh, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm sorry, but I I did not um interrupt Ms. Barry's presentation or any.
I'm not taking comments from you, Mr. Time. And at this point in time, you've, you've had your opportunity to do your presentation. I'm moving on to Paul Orlando. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Paul Orlando. Would you like to speak to um what you've received with respect to your enforcement order and also speak to the status of? The.
Recording in progress.
September. Building permit, anything else you'd like to speak to on this case?
Um, yes, I would. Can you hear me? Okay. Okay, uh, well, back. When we first received the request. Um, we, I did go out to the site to take a look. Um, I obviously found that the pool house was larger. Approved. Um, we directed the applicant or the the owners, the contractor to stop working on that. Uh, to submit a uh building permit application for the pool house and plans for that. Um, that was submitted in September, which I think was after this original appeal was filed. Um, we reviewed those plans. Found that the pool house is substantially larger than was originally approved. And that the spa appears to now encroach into the rear setback. So we put that permit on hold and. Added a comment to the application which went out to the contractor that they had to. Um, go back to the zoning board for the changes. Um, the pool house is larger than originally approved and that the. Spa doesn't approach in the rear setback, so I suspect that the board will be seeing. This again on another petition. Uh, for those changes.
Now, the other question I have for you, Mr. Orlando, is that the um. The. Maybe a special permit authorized a pool that was eighteen by thirty-six. Um, but the building permit. Issued in twenty twenty. Showed a pool of eighteen by forty. It's my understanding that the special permit controls. Do you have a sense on that?
Um, you know that I I'll have to look into that. Um, I didn't note that in my original review. But but I will be happy to look into that.
Okay. Okay, um. I'm now going to go through. The information we've received regarding the aspects. That were subject to the special permit. Um. And reaction taken. So the special permit and building permit covered a large construction project involving multiple structures and many existing non-conformities as follows. The lot size ninety thousand square feet is in the bylaw and the existing condition is twenty-one thousand five hundred square feet. Coverage by structures fifteen percent is in the bylaw. The existing condition was twenty-one point five percent and granted in the special permit was twenty-nine point eight percent. That was contained in the plans. Um, those calculations were contained in the plans that were submitted as part of the special program. Um, coverage by structures and impervious surfaces, twenty-five percent is in the bylaw. The existing condition is twenty-eight point six percent and we granted thirty-five percent in the special permit. The garage side setback is fifteen feet in the bylaw. The existing condition was seven feet. Seven feet was retained in the proposed project, so no relief was required. The garage rear setback fifteen feet is in the bylaw. The existing condition was two feet. Two inches in a bump out, we granted two feet, two inches for a longer portion of the rear wall in the special permit. The garage height, one point five stories or twenty-five feet is in the bylaw. The existing condition was twenty-three feet, six inches. No change was proposed in the project. No relief was required. House front setback thirty feet in the bylaw. Existing condition was sixteen feet, four inches. Fourteen feet, nine inches was granted in the special permit. The house rear setback is forty feet in the bylaw. Existing condition was thirty-eight feet, six inches. We granted thirty-three feet in the special permit. The house height is thirty-five feet in the bylaw. The existing condition was forty-one feet. No change was made with the proposed project. No relief was required. Additional items that were considered and relief was granted in the special permit. A spa of one hundred square feet, not in the rear setback. A pool eighteen feet by thirty-six feet, not in the rear setback. The building permit. Plans reflected eighteen feet by forty feet. The pool shed per housing pool equipment, ten feet by eighteen feet, presumably a shed would have a low profile move. Um, so I just wanted to lay that out as to. The things that we considered. Um, I believe that although. In the request for enforcement, there were three specific things listed. There was also the request um. That any and all project non-conformities be remediated to comply with the special permit. Um, so what I plan to do is go through. These items one by one um and have the board discuss them um. And feel, you know, get a sense of what we feel and then we'll take public comment strictly um related to the item. No ancillary comments will be accepted. So the first item is. The garage. As I previously said, the the aspect of the garage that was under review in the special permit was with respect to the side setback, the rear setback and the roof height. Um. We received as-built. Plans, which I believe indicate that. He has built is seven feet from the side setback, two point two feet, two inches from the rear setback. And the roof height is. The same as the existing condition of twenty-three feet, six inches. Although the facade may be slightly changed, it does not appear as if it impacts your overall mass of the garage. What is the ruling with the board?
I would agree with that assessment.
Me too. Yeah, we don't take into consideration the couplage. In the garage.
No, it doesn't. It's not. A a couplage can go up to ten feet above the.
Okay.
The roof porch. Definitely. Um. Can you remind me who who did this analysis that you're referring to? It's submitted by the. And others? Yes, on September nineteenth, looking at one. Um, we received. Ooh, I know, as built. No, I just wanted to know who did it.
Didn't the Hancock Engineering do the survey?
That's the last one. Yeah, and we have it here. Okay. It is. September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. It was submitted to the building department. Unfortunately. Nobody submitted it to us, so I had to go online to. Find it, but this is, this is the as-built. And the garage is showing with a seven foot on the sideline, the two feet, two inches from the rear line. And the um.
The height's okay.
This is on the company real. Yeah, okay. And the height. The existing garage was twenty-three feet, six inches. And. And the as-built. Was no higher than that. Was the same height. There was no change in the original.
It's just that the dormers were rounded dormers.
Right.
Oh. And more of them.
Yeah. But they were dormers that don't go above the height of the roofs.
Right, so from my perspective, I'm okay with the garage, but that's.
Okay.
It it's that non-conformity not exaggerated here. Not enhanced.
Is there any member of the public who had not spoken, who would like to speak? With respect to the garage solely as it pertains to whether or not it qualifies with the parameters set out in the special permit? If you wish to be heard, please raise your hand. The main house. That was considered. In the special permit with respect to the front setback, the rear setback. And the roof height. So the roof height for the existing condition was forty-one feet, which is over the bylaw, but it was grandfathered. And we probably did not change it. The front setback. We granted fourteen feet, nine inches, and I believe it included a little porch on the front. Um, and the rear setback. We granted thirty-three feet instead of thirty-eight feet, six inches. I don't see dimensions on this. Well. Yeah, here it is. Okay, so.
We we would be.
That's the side, isn't it?
It's the side. Now, this, it's a good porch, the side.
Yeah, so that was a. I'm looking for the front. Yeah.
Madam Chairman, um, the the plan that you have there does not have the setbacks. I do have a plan that I can share that does have the rear and the front setbacks if you'd like to see it.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's appropriate.
As-built design?
Yes.
That certified?
From the certified, yes.
Okay.
All right.
Sense. Yes.
Um, this is the uh the current certified as-built. This is um Hancock Associates stamped. This is the as-built. This is a little bit newer than the one that you have. Um, because uh they went back out and they actually added the uh. The um fence here along the front after the after the one that was submitted. But um to to just be clear, uh, the rear setback here. Here is thirty-three foot nine and the requirement was thirty-three. And the front setback here is fifteen point zero six. And the requirement was, I believe, uh, for fourteen foot nine. So those are in compliance.
We object, Madam Chair. We haven't seen this as-built. Just want to put that on the record.
Would you like to continue this hearing and hope these materials can be distributed to everyone?
Yes.
Let's work with you about that.
Uh, I'd like the opportunity to speak to that issue. This is an as-built plan. It's been on file. The the building inspector has it. It was supplied directly in response to the Burns' request. In fact, in fact, Mr. Timman criticized the as-built plan for not containing certain information.
This hearing is before the ZBA, and nobody has provided that to the ZBA. And the appeal is re with respect to as-built versus a special permit. And how can you expect us to make a decision if nobody supplies us with the information? Supplying it to the building inspector is not the same as supplying it to the ZBA.
With due respect, I understand that, Madam Chair, but the building inspector asked that it be provided to him. We we were responding to his request for that. It wasn't not provided to the ZBA. It was provided in response to the building. I would respectfully suggest that to the extent Mr. Timman and and the Burns are are complaining or suggesting that the as-built plan does not accurately depict what's on the ground, then it was up to them to provide you with the plan and make that argument.
Well, we the plan should have been provided to us. It looks like it bears an October date. And so I just I renew my objection to it being used this evening and um and do do support a continuance. For that, on that reason alone, so that this could be evaluated fairly by all interested parties.
We object to that again and again. Mr. Timman said in his opening remarks that he'd been to the building inspector's office as recently as yesterday, I believe, to check on the status of things. The as-built plan was, excuse me.
I didn't.
Excuse me, may I finish? I didn't interrupt you, Mr. Timman.
Well, you did, but I uh I didn't.
I didn't interrupt you, Mr. Timman.
Excuse me.
There, this is a part of the record with the building inspector. The applicant is here appealing the building inspector's decision. It's up to the applicant to provide the information the board needs. They are now seeking request uh requesting a continuance, having failed to do so.
I I'm sorry. I don't agree with you. You you are, you're representing the property owner, which is the only one that can buy as-built information. And this appeal was sent to the zoning board of appeals. Your client was aware of the appeal, and it's their obligation to support their position. And you cannot expect the zoning board of appeals to have to go to the building department to get paperwork, which is important for a ZBA hearing.
I don't expect that, Madam Chair. I expected the applicant who's appealing to the board to get the records from the building inspector's office where they're a matter of public record.
Uh, can I just ask? So Mr. Harrington said that when he shared his screen, he said that that was an updated. Um, site plan. Was was that shared with the building department? Or is that something that was just in-house and not viewed by the general, by the public yet, by the, you know, by the building inspector? Was that shared at all?
I'm not aware that has, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm not aware that it has been shared with the building department with those two dimensions on them.
Well, there's the answer.
Yes, go ahead, Captain.
Uh, Mr. Harrington, for a question, um, you said it was an updated plan. Do you have a date that the updates were made to that file?
Uh, well, this um. The date that I have on the plan right now is is today's date. I don't know when those dimensions were added.
Okay, thank you.
So the applicant has requested a continuance, which they have the right to do. Um, in order for the continuance to be granted, we would have to approve it. So should I make a.
But is there anything we need to discuss now to make sure that people have all their ducks in a row, so that we're not doing this again next month?
Okay, that's a good point. So I I I think. What we're looking at is, looking for is information. Regarding the as-built and the special permit. With respect to the garage side setback, rear setback, roof height. The house front setback, rear setback, and roof height, total coverage by structures and impervious surfaces. The swimming pool. As-built and and built the spa um with respect to location and size. We approved a hundred square feet. It appears to be a hundred and fifty. Um, and the pool house. We approved a shed of ten by eighteen um housing equipment. And coverage by structures. We granted twenty-nine point eight percent and even. The reason it was not spelled out as a condition in the special permit is because the entire special permit was conditioned on the plans received, which included coverage by structures of twenty-nine point eight percent. The only reason we included the total coverage by structures and impervious surface at thirty-five percent was because we were giving the contractor leeway to figure out how to get the impervious surface down to thirty-five percent. Because the plans presented to us exceeded thirty-five percent. And that was the purpose of putting it in, um, and giving them discretion as to how um they reached that. That total coverage of thirty-five percent. Anything else you think would?
Uh, I would just suggest maybe any additional information you might have. Uh, with respect to a drainage plan, that could include, you know, specs on a dry well. Um, and anything else that you you might have in mind.
If I may, I would like to object to all of this. Again, as I stated, I think that all of this exceeds what is before the board. I don't think that the board has the authority to address issues that are not before the building inspector. The building inspector doesn't address structure coverage of the house or anything else. I think all of this is premature. I don't think it's properly before the board. And the drainage issue, I'm not really sure how we get to the drainage issue. Now we really are going back and this board's sitting in acting as an appellate board over its own decision. So I object to the board going down this path. I think the issues are quite clearly spelled out in the request for enforcement, in Mr. Orlando's response, and in the Burns' appeal to this board. And these things that you were discussing now go well beyond those three narrow issues.
The request for enforcement included. An order that any and all project non-conformities be remedied to comply with the special permit, building permit, and all town zoning requirements. And that would bring in every aspect of what the ZBA reviewed in a special permit.
I renew my objection.
That's fine, well. The building inspector requested that. So we would need, the building requested information, the building inspector requested information on topographical changes, and we would need documentation of that. Yeah, once our next meeting, December, uh, you know, how does it?
Oh, your name.
One sixteen.
I have a question about the root text. Is that a non-issue?
Yeah.
Root texts that were added, that's not a setback issue, but that's a building issue.
Well, I I think it was in the building permit. I think the question is, does it add to massive?
It was a question about privacy. Original plan versus built plan.
Why not? We just moved to. So that's the other information.
You have a you have a point that I have in in getting that and actually echoing Mr. Harrison's comment. Yes, can I move on? Is that, uh, Mr. Burns' point earlier is that the uh building permit was not before. There's some, uh, what was this, uh, the permit drawings, which now have these items. Were never looked at, and perhaps had the neighbors seen these. Okay, during the, for me, the uh special permit aspect of it, this might have been uh.
Well, we can review that. We'll talk about that.
That's that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to be clear, the those drawings are as-built plans. They couldn't have been provided at the special permit hearing.
No, there were, there were two sets of drawings. One that was submitted with a special permit. And the one, one in nineteen twenty nineteen and a different set of drawings were submitted to obtain a building permit in twenty twenty.
Yes.
And the as-built.
Have those.
The as-built. Was appeared to be in accordance with the the plans for the building permit, but not in accordance with the plans, the special permit. And we have those. I make a motion to, what, did you have some? We, the only item we look discussed was garage, nobody a public. At the request of the applicant. I move to continue the public hearing to November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, and extend the time for writing the decision to February seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. For the application of Benjamin V. Timman, attorney, on behalf of Samuel and Tracy Byrne of one dash three Blossom Lane for the appeal of an administrative decision under section seven point four point five of the zoning bylaw regarding a request for a zoning enforcement filed with the building inspector on July twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, for construction in progress, which appears to exceed the scope of the special permit granted, building permit issued at Two Blossom Lane, assessor's map number seventeen, lot number twelve in District E, filed with the town clerk on August eighth, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a second? John? Any discussion? All in favor? Five approve. Thank you. So we will continue this to November seventeenth, twenty twenty. November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, at seven P M.
Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move to administrative matters. Remove, review and approval of meeting minutes. Did anybody look at the August ones?
No, I was looking at all the best.
Hattering, actually, you did, and you mentioned I needed to put in a period where there was a question mark, and that was the only comment.
And it was a long time. I don't, I responded even.
But didn't we approve those at another meeting?
I didn't know if you voted.
Okay, because if I talked about it, then we must have done it at another meeting.
We did do it at the September meeting. I didn't know that you took a vote.
So I move to reaffirm our approval of the August seventeenth meeting. Second, all in favor?
Okay, thank you.
That was right, no.
Yeah, get that question.
Status of decisions.
From August, we have two outstanding, two Woodham, Woodum, Woodhome Road. And uh thirty-nine Coolidge Road.
I get the Coolidge Road, right?
You do.
It's on my desk, all right.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot on my list, too. And September, Eight Kings Way and sixteen Old Essex Road, and I will get those minutes.
Okay, yeah.
They have to.
If if you can at least get the pieces on those two things. If you can at least get the pieces on those two things.
You are not responsible for any change. Sarah is responsible for Eight Kings Way and Two Woodhome Road, but she also did a couple others in the interim, so. We'll give him Sarah, a bad girl.
Double attitude. You on my jam, you looking forward?
Needs an extra decision straight.
The only other thing is on the forty B. There was a meeting held. And I'll send you out the. I did a little blurb that was put up on the website. We have a section on the website under HAC Appeal. And I put up a little blurb based on that meeting for a timeline. And basically the parties have to get together beginning of November. To agree to the issues and set up a tentative timeline and then the HAC will meet. And I think it's December twentieth and establish the formal timeline.